We're going to call to order our June 18th meeting of the Pecosin City School Board. As his last act as our student representative, Thatcher's going to take us through our pledge and moment of silence.
If you'd all please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you. And finally, once again, a quote. Sometimes, the best thing you can do is to not think, not obsess, not wonder, but simply breathe and have faith that everything will work out for the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Thatcher. Ms. Firth, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, we had an amendment to the personnel action that you all received tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Purdy, recognition. There's a lot, so thank you in advance for your patience.
So much so that we appreciate everybody's flexibility as we are going to do the first couple of items of recognition and then we will swap out and bring in the next wave. You're more than welcome to join outside and still linger as there might still be some seats. Of course, this is also broadcast so you can see the tail end of it that way, too. Madam Chair, members of the board, community members, colleagues, thank you so much for being here this evening. As Chair Martin said, we do have a lot to recognize. The first, though, I, in a moment, am going to invite Thatcher Fauci-Trowski back up because we want to thank him for all of his service and dedication, the time that he gives to the board, you know, missing other obligations because he prioritized his service, is very commendable, and we want to thank him for that. He was an exemplary leader this year, showcasing commitment, professionalism, and passion. Pictured here are just a few of the many faces of Thatcher. During his tenure, he's been an active member of numerous student organizations such as the SCA and DECA where he served as district president. His leadership roles within these organizations have not only demonstrated his exceptional organizational skills, but also his ability to inspire and motivate his peers towards achieving common goals. Moreover, Thatcher has distinguished himself academically, participating in the prestigious Governor's School program, where he has undoubtedly contributed to the intellectual enrichment of our whole school community. His dedication and skill on the varsity golf and soccer teams have not gone unnoticed, showcasing his commitment to excellence both on and off the field as well. He concludes his term on the school board, and we extend our deepest appreciation for his dedication. He has improved the educational experience for students within the school division by being their representative. Please join me congratulating Thatcher Fauci-Trowski for his outstanding service.
And now, we want to welcome our new student representative to the board, A.J. Lumaji, who is a junior at Pecosin High School. A.J. is heavily involved in student life at PHS, as an active member of the Journalism Club, Model UN, Evolution Showband, and the Scholastic Bull Team. He has a strong GPA and has leadership within his church where he helps organize community events and has had volunteer experience at summer camps. A.J. is a talented pianist who participates in competitions and hopes to pursue law after high school. We look forward to his contributions and thank him for serving as a representative for the student body of PHS. Please join me in welcoming A.J. tonight.
My apologies, I got out of order, which is easy to do when you have a stack this big. You would have to be a hermit to have never heard of our amazing Odyssey The Mine teams and all of their accomplishments year after year. This year is no exception, with all of our teams taking first place in state competition. This allowed for them to travel to the world finals last month at Iowa State University, where over 700 teams from around the world competed. Our students packed their bags, all of the props and tools that they needed, and made the trek to Iowa. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank their coach, Mr. Norm Remchuk, for the generosity and the generosity of the Pecosin Education Foundation, who helped organize and financially support the trip for our students. Keep in mind, I'm saying 700 teams. Of the 700 teams from around the world, the PES competed against the top of the top 46 teams and finished in 10th place. The PMS team competed against the top 49 teams from around the world and finished in 4th place. And the PHS team competed against the top 37 teams from around the world and finished in 5th place. And we are also very, very proud to say that after a five-year absence, the PHS OM Vehicle Team exceeded expectations by placing first in state and then proudly still represented Pecosin at the world finals competition. Your hard work and dedication throughout the entire year certainly paid off, and we hope that you are all as proud as we are. At this time, I'm going to recognize each team by calling you up individually. We'll do a picture and then we'll call the next team, okay? We're going to start with the elementary team.
I spend a lot of time with this team.
Lila McAdams. Elizabeth Salick. Coach Emily McAdams. Coach Rachel McAdams. Coach Norm Remchuk. Next up, our middle school team. Jackson Dykstra. Leanie Ferguson. Brayden Heldrich. Liam Heldrich. Coach Charlie Libby. And now, on to our PHS teams. Bo Baggett. Carlton Gill. Ethan Jordan. Cassidy Larson. Charlie Libby. Emily McAdams. Andrew Rojewoda. Coach Norm Remchuk. Coach Troy Rojewoda.
Norm, do you want me to call the other team, too, and do one together?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call both teams.
Yeah, you want, yeah.
Wait, you want to take this picture separate?
Well, do it separate, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Grace Green. Michaela McDaniels. Declan Marianka. Chloe Nun. Jacob Rogers. Coach Chad Donavant. Coach Chris McDaniels. Coach Kimberly McDaniels. Thank you. Okay, this is going to end our first wave, and so thank you so much for coming and celebrating our students. We're going to pause for a brief moment while we make some transitions.
Congratulations, everybody, thank you. You're welcome to stay for the meeting. It's my favorite meeting of the year.
You have one.
It's clapping so much, my watch fell off.
But think of all the steps.
Yeah, that's right.
Fill in the front, guys. Guys, fill in the front. Fill in the front. Yeah, you're going to be coming up, so just fill in the front. Keep coming, keep coming. There are seats down here, y'all. There's some seats left down here.
Just about six, seven seats. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening and for being flexible in our seating. We're limited in space, and I'm also really glad that everybody showed up. Usually our June meetings, you know, when it's after school, people are on vacations, but so thank you so much for being here. We'll resume next with our Islander Award winners. So, Pecosin School offers an internal recognition called the Islander Award. This award is given to those who truly go above and beyond, and while most of our staff will fall into this category, those selected this year are incredible examples of the brilliance occurring within our division. After a share about each of you, please come forward to be recognized, and then we will have a group photo at the end. Faith Axum is celebrated for her exceptional dedication to PHS, managing an instrumental program, sponsoring major social events such as the prom, and supporting school spirit through ticket sales and volunteer coordination. Her contributions extend beyond her regular duties providing invaluable transportation during a driver shortage. Congratulations to Faith. Who is not with us this evening? Roberto Ambrosio, also known affectionately as Bo, is honored for her unwavering commitment to student success. She goes above and beyond to help students excel, particularly those on IEPs and Bible fours, and plays a vital role in the VTSs team. Her efforts in securing PEF grants and leading the Student to Student Club are remarkable. I don't believe Ms. Ambrosio is here this evening, but let's give her a round of applause Stacy Tuttle is honored for her innovative and supportive role at PMS. As the VTSs Tier One Lead, she created and manages this successful school store called the Boultique and frequently provides administrative support. Her involvement as a PTO teacher representative and volunteer coordinator is also very commendable as she gives up her time and talent again and again. Oh, wait, Ms. Tuttle, would you mind waiting up here? Thank you. You were going to do a picture at the end. Nancy Dibler is recognized for her proactive spirit and unwavering commitment at PES. She consistently steps up to meet various needs, from teaching to supporting staff and programs. And for years, her leadership in the Great Computer Challenge has been crucial, and guidance to new staff members are invaluable. Heather Dever is celebrated for her creativity and community spirit as an exceptional PE teacher. Beyond the classroom, she supports evening programs, organizes fundraisers, and facilitates numerous community camps. Her dedication to the growth and development of students is truly inspiring. Ms. Nikki Tolliver-Robinson is recognized for her extraordinary dedication and infectious spirit at PPS. Serving since 1999, she excels in maintaining the school's operations and fostering a positive environment. Her contributions to Relay for Life and various community activities highlight her deep commitment. I'm going to ask Ms. Tolliver-Robinson to stay up here for a moment as I share our next recognition. As you may know from the Islander Award winners, we select a staff member to be nominated for the State Rise Award, which also recognizes those in education who go above and beyond. Nominees can be paraprofessionals, bus drivers, SROs, office staff, and custodians. We are incredibly happy to honor the unwavering dedication and infectious spirit that Ms. Nikki exudes every day at PPS with our nomination for the State Rise Award. I'm going to read your write-up. I'm going to try not to cry because Ms. Nikki is a wonderful person. "As stated earlier, Ms. Nikki has been with Pecosin School since 1999, demonstrating unmatched loyalty for both and love for both the staff and students. She serves us tirelessly, not just within the walls of the school, but also in the arrival lane as our unofficial traffic controller. Her bright smile and warm greetings are often the first thing our students and family see in the morning, setting a positive tone for the day. As the sole remaining PCPS custodial staff member, she goes above and beyond her duties. She coordinates seamlessly with the night crews and the service master manager to ensure our building is always immaculate, bridging gaps that other schools don't have to worry about. Her knowledge of the building's operations is unparalleled, and she never hesitates to jump in and help wherever needed. Her dedication extends beyond cleanliness and maintenance. She is actively contributing to the admin and office team, offering valuable insights on how they can be more efficient and attentive to everyone's needs. She has a remarkable ability to sense when staff members need extra care and communicates these needs to the administration and ensures that everyone is supported. Over the years, she has built strong relationships with students, providing them with a safe space, a smile, a hug, or a gentle reminder to make good choices." I've actually heard you say that many times. "She helps reinforce our school-wide expectations and provides teachable moments, much like the other staff members do. And beyond her daily duties, she is an integral part of the school community. She supports the Relay for Life teams, helps with clothing donations, and represents the school family during times of loss or hardship. She even captures the special moments of the school as their unofficial photographer, ensuring that every assembly, spirit day, and baby shower is remembered. Her involvement with her church and unwavering faith underscore her deep love and care for all of her colleagues. We know that she holds each member of our school community in her heart and prayers. It is our great pleasure to announce the Division's nomination for the Rise Award." It is our great pleasure to announce the division's nomination for the Rise Award to be Ms. Nikki Tolliver-Robinson. You represent this division through and through and couldn't think of anyone better to receive this award." So, we will not know the results of the state winner until December, but we're very certain that Ms. Nikki's going to be finalists. PHS athletics have had quite the year, and the spring season was no exception. We'd first like to recognize the accomplishments of our spring track team, especially two athletes who have earned themselves state titles. Evan Harris earned state champion in the pole vault, and in this video, you can see him effortlessly clearing the bar. I feel like he had a whole extra foot to go. We also had Baker Green earn two state titles in the 100-meter and 200-meter events. And in this next video, you can see him pull ahead and take a tremendous lead.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Class One Boys 800-Meter World Results Set in Final Lines. And here are the top eight finishers. In eighth place from Lancaster, Joshua Moore, with a time of two minutes, 6.87 seconds. The total finish of the quarter is 3.5 seconds. Here are three more to come in five seconds.
We'd like to recognize Baker. And I don't know, is Evan here today? Can Evan come up too?
He's not here.
No, he's not here today? Okay, thank you for mentioning that. As well as, I think it's one of those for the coach? Mr. Coach Campbell, if you could please join us? We are also very excited to recognize the outstanding achievements of the Pecosa High School Varsity Baseball Team. This year, our team has shown exceptional talent, dedication, and sportsmanship culminating in the remarkable achievement of placing first in the state. Under the extraordinary leadership of Coach Zimmerman, who has been deservedly honored with the Class Two State Coach of the Year, our team has demonstrated what can be achieved with hard work, perseverance, and a strong sense of community. I would also like to highlight that many of our team members have received individual accolades for their exceptional performances throughout the season. And these honors include anything from being nominated as the First Team All-Region, First Team All-State, recognizing their superior skills and contributions to the field. A number of our players were also selected for the Second Team All-Region and Second Team All-State showcasing their depth of talent in our roster. And the prestigious Player of the Year Award was bestowed upon one of our players, and we had two players participate in the All-Tide Water Baseball Game held at the War Memorial Stadium last week. This season has not only been a testament to the individual talents of our players, but also to the spirit of the teamwork and unity that defines Pecosa High School. Each player, coach, and support staff member has played a crucial role in achieving this state championship, and their efforts have brought immense pride to our entire school division. As we celebrate this monumental accomplishment, we would like to extend our heartfelt congratulations to the entire Varsity Baseball Team, Coach Zimmerman, and all of those who have supported them along the way, including the parents. Your hard work and dedication have set a new standard of excellence, and we look forward to witnessing your continued success in the future. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our state champions of Pecosa High School Varsity Baseball Team. As I call your name, please join us up front. Brody Bunting. PJ Chek. Mason Dees. Dane Galakak. Dominic Galakak, stop standing right here. Baker Green. Lucas Haddock. Logan Keasy. Drew Law. Christian Leonard. Tyler Martin. Eli Monroe. Lucas Power. Lucas Ratliff. Nolan Riley. David Rose. Nicholas Schoffelberger. Dan Spurling. Aiden True. Eli Tyndall. Brady Williams. The Social Media Coordinator, Zach Baker. What? I am missing Max. How are we missing Max? Max Fritz? Can you guys check yours all, just to make sure? It should have been... I don't see. Let's see. It might be at the bottom. It might be Extra Special Max. Ronnie Bradshaw, Coach? The JV Assistant Coach, Jared Davis. The JV Assistant Coach, Elliot Duty. Max Fritz. Assistant Coach, Jimmy Green. JV Head Coach, Justin Hollingsworth. Manager, Ryan Patton. Assistant Coach, Mike Tyndall. Game Changer Manager, Devin Zimmerman. And Head Coach, Craig Zimmerman. All right, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. Say cheese. Okay, congratulations. You want to take the rest? Here, can I give them to all of you to disperse? Or do you want to leave some of them behind? Okay, I just thought that they were all yours. I think these are definitely yours. Yep, that's it. Thank you so much. Okay. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Roxanne Overbee to step forward so that she can share with you the incredible work that the PPS PTO has been doing for the past several years and the impact that this will have on our primary school.
Sarah, we have Susie Crandall speaking. I'm Susie Crandall. This is Roxanne Overbee. We're here on behalf of the Pecosa Primary School PTO. She's a little emotional, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. This has been an amazing endeavor the past two years to raise the money for the Legacy Fund for the Barbara Riggins Pavilion, which will be an outdoor learning space for our primary school. Roxanne has really put a lot of effort into this, and the community has really come together, so we're just so thankful for everyone in the district. A couple months ago, Roxanne came and gave one last push, so we really are so thankful that we've reached our goal, and we will be breaking ground this summer. And we're very excited to present a check for $21,342.
That's going to be a wonderful addition, and that's been years in the making. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Overbee, but do you even have children at the primary school anymore?
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, yes. She started off at the primary school, and then she's been moving into the elementary school. She's working very hard with our PTOs in both groups, and we're really thankful for everybody's support and endeavors in raising that money. That's going to be wonderful for our students and a great memory. Thank you very much. That concludes our recognitions for the evening. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Wonderful job. Thank you. Okay, we'll get started with our presentations and reports. Ms. Brown, do you have the instructional update?
All right. All right, well, good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbage, members of our school board, Superintendent Tillot, staff, and of course, members of our Pecosa community. This evening, we will be covering several topics, including our school quality survey, textbook editions, ESSA entitlement grants, and our PCPS Division-wide literacy plan. As requested at our last school board meeting, this evening, I'll share results of our 2023-24 School Quality Survey. The results of this survey include 686 participants, representing teachers, paraprofessionals, students, staff members, administrators. And 88% of our respondents had liked to note were parents of students currently enrolled in PCPS. I know they're a little small here. We're going to hit some of the highlights that are up there, but wanted you to have access to the graphs. They're also within, or will be within your presentation. So, first off, some of the things that we looked at were the high learning standards, rigor, the quality of expectations, if our students are being challenged by schoolwork, feedback that students receive from their teachers, and the academic courses. As you can see here, the dark blue is going to be those who may have strongly disagreed with a topic. It goes from strongly disagree, disagree, agree, strongly agree. So, we have over 70% in every category, except for the bottom, which is one of the things that says, "My student has benefited from instructional program that addressed their individual academic needs." What we do when we have any of these surveys, we focus on the areas that we're really showing our strengths and those areas where we look and say, okay, how do we work this into our program for the upcoming year? The next topic that you'll see is going to be those that talk about the teacher, the counselor, the relationships, helping with school problems. We also have that our students receive support for their individual needs. They get to prepare for their future. One of the areas that we noticed, which is also in our strategic plan, and we are moving into that this year, is the school offers students a variety of extracurricular activities. One of the things that we look at is polling our students to see if the academic opportunities after school, extracurricular opportunities, are those things that they are, A, currently interested in, or if not, are there ideas they have so we can find sponsors to help those continue? So, we will be working on those types of surveys through our schools to see how we can participate, not only at the middle and high school level, but bringing them down. We've had conversations at the elementary school level as well. Some of the questions on our next slide go to school administrators, making decisions, principals communicating the mission and the vision. School administrators are available when concerns arise. School administrators are courteous when there are concerns and responsive when there is a concern. And as you notice, we have higher than 75% for agree or strongly disagree, and those areas that you see there, as you can tell. And then finally, we have our last category. It's next to last. These are about more of our parent engagement. Some of our family engagement. Families are informed about school-sponsored activities. Families are informed about instructional behavioral supports. Families are encouraged to attend school-sponsored activities, such as back-to-school night. We encourage families to volunteer. Staff members and families treat each other with respect. School respects and values input, and the school uses family input for instruction. The two areas that we will be looking at, we had a lot of great results along the way, as you will see. Of course, this also lets us know how to hone what we do next year in order to strengthen it. And those two areas, of course, are going to be making sure that we are having that Tier One instruction in our classroom, that it's something that all students get, that evidence-based literacy instruction and research strategies. And then, of course, at the bottom, to make sure that we continue to seek out. As you are probably aware, we've sent out quite a few surveys this year seeking out parent input, whether it be about some of our instructional programs or our school quality, or maybe what our overarching theme should be for next year and our focus areas for our needs assessment. We will continue to throw some surveys out to parents because it's really important to increase that communication so that your voice is heard. And finally, the last is more about our safety and discipline. We have school staff members are aware of the safety, security procedures. All students are aware of safety procedures. Our school is safe. Really wanted to point that out. We had 93% of our of our school community that felt that our school is safe for them to attend. Discipline is enforced fairly. Staff members and students treat each other with respect. Staff members are responsive to students when they report bullying. Bullying's not tolerated. And students in the school are treated fairly regardless of their race, culture, religion, sexual orientation, gender, or disabilities. And as you notice up there, we really have shown that safety procedures are constantly enforced. Our school, our students are aware, our staff members are aware. But the areas that we'll probably be honing in more is going to be our Division-wide Bullying Committee, making sure we're seeking out student input, inviting students to our committee meeting, as well as parents and seeking out that input too. So, that wraps up our quality, just to show you all the results and kind of where we fare right now and how it goes into our decision-making as we proceed. Next up, we have our textbook editions. So, this evening, you will find a consideration of approval for two textbooks for World History and AP Precálculus. In accordance with school board policy, PCPS convened committees consisting of division and school administrators, instructional coaches, teachers, and parents who do not serve as staff members to review and select a textbook for both of these courses. These texts were then made available for public review, both online and in-person to the community. Parents were notified of review dates and times via ParentSquare and also to our school division website. No comments or suggestions were received. The textbooks that are being recommended for approval this evening are World History by HMH and also Precálculus Graphical, Numerical, and Algebraic AP Edition, and that's the 11th edition, and it's published by Pearson. One of the goals within Focus Area One of our strategic plan is going to be centering around increasing access to and enrollment in our college-level coursework at the secondary level. We're excited to bring pre-AP World History I and AP Calculus, along with our Dual Enrollment Teachers for Tomorrow program, to PCPS for the 24-25 school year to continue our push to move beyond mastery. As you can see in the APNDE enrollment numbers up on our comparison chart, 219 students were enrolled in our most rigorous curriculum during the 23-22-23 academic year. Last year, this number grew by 121 students, increasing our APNDE enrollment to 340 students. It is noteworthy that we will have three additional rigorous college-level courses that will be offered and have fully filled classes for next year. Next, we're moving on to our ESSA entitlement grants. Pecosa City Public School is eligible to receive federal funds under Every Student Succeeds Act to support instructional programming. The school division is applying for federal funds under ESSA. These funds will be distributed through each entitlement grant for the purpose of supporting our students and our staff. The Virginia Department The Virginia Department of Education has not released the award amounts at this time. However, school divisions in Virginia have been directed to utilize our 23-24 funding, and of course, they'll send the additional allotment after. So the four applications we'll be reviewing tonight are going to be Title I, II, III, and IV Part A. For Title I, allocations are used to fund one reading specialist at Pecosin Primary School in order to provide highly qualified reading intervention. An additional set-aside funds from the Title I will also be used to meet identified needs through McKinnney-Vento and our Homeless Assistance Act. Our goal is identified students will show growth on the vowels, this is replacing pals, as we've mentioned before, literacy assessment by one performance band. For Title II, Title II Part A funds are used to assist PCPS in funding one professional learning and communications supervisor to work with teachers, staff, school administrators, and division-level staff to provide professional development, serve as a mentor, support change initiatives, research, and provide necessary resources, coordinate content meetings, and provide one-on-one support to teachers, especially our newest teachers to the division. The Title II grant does not cover the entire salary, however, it does assist. And we're so glad she's here. Title III is our language instruction for English learners and immigrant students. Our allocation, as you see, is $1,062, but every little bit helps. Title III funds are used to provide professional development for our English-language learner teachers as well as general education teachers who serve our EL population in the classrooms. The training allows the staff to be equipped to best meet the needs of these students while building language-rich environments that lead to success in the classroom. Additionally, Title III funds will provide instructional resources to assist in bridging the English-language acquisition and instructional content. And finally tonight, our Title IV Part A grant, which is student support and academic achievement grants. They go into the category of well-rounded education, safe and healthy students, and effective use of technology. Title IV Part A funds will be used to provide stipends for teachers to continue developing a comprehensive secondary English curriculum. And tonight, we will discuss our PCPS literacy division or division literacy plan. In addition, the VLA requires each public school division in Virginia to develop a division literacy plan. We mentioned that before at our last meeting. Our plan must include the following components. We have assessment and data analysis. We have instructional strategies, intervention programs, professional development, family engagement, and progress monitoring. The requirement for our division literacy plan ensures a systematic and cohesive approach to literacy instruction across all schools within the division. For Pecosin, developing a division literacy plan is a crucial step in aligning with state mandates and ensuring that every student receives the support they need and to become proficient readers. This plan serves as a comprehensive strategy outlining how the division will meet the literacy needs of its students and comply with the act. The PCPS Division Literacy Plan was created over several months. Administrators, teachers, staff members, we all attended regional meetings and training sessions hosted by VDOE throughout the region to systematically work through the VDOE template to ensure all stakeholders were considered and involved. The PCPS Literacy Committee met to provide input and help craft the literacy vision along with teachers and the administrators from the school. This plan will hopefully guide the division's efforts in literacy instruction from early identification to reading difficulties to the implementation of targeted interventions and continuous professional development for our educators. Our literacy vision is grounded in the following principles. One, effective communication and creative expression. Our students will cultivate the ability to express themselves thoughtfully and purposefully through reading, writing, speaking, and listening, fostering a culture of communication and collaboration. Two, critical thinking and problem-solving. Students will acquire the research analytical skills and synthesis skills needed to be independent thinkers, innovative problem-solvers, and discerning consumers of information, preparing them for success in college, careers, and beyond. And finally, perseverance and preparation. PCPS students will develop resilience and perseverance in the face of challenging work, making meaning from high-quality and complex texts and preparing to meet the rigorous demands of higher education and our workforce. The commitments that we make to our school community, our students, our parents, our board, providing targeted support to ensure that all students learn to read and write, addressing individual needs, and fostering growth for every learner. We will be employing instructional strategies that are evidence-based and grounded in research, ensuring that teaching practices are aligned with the latest research in literacy education. We have been working on that through our curriculum development towards the end of the school year and over the summer. Engaging students in challenging work using high-quality instructional materials and a broad selection of media and complex texts, fostering curiosity and broadening their perspectives. Providing daily tier-one instruction that is explicit, systematic, cumulative, laying a strong foundation for literacy development and building upon it with each successive lesson. Using data to drive our instruction and make intervention and enrichment decisions. Incorporating authentic literacy learning experiences that require students to collaborate, to think critically, to communicate through a variety of media, ensuring real-world experiences directly tying into our strategic plan. Providing ongoing professional development to ensure our teachers possess the knowledge, the skills needed, implement evidence-based literacy practices effectively, and promoting continuous growth and improvement. And communicating regularly with our families about student literacy outcomes, building partnerships and collaboration between home and school to support student success. And finally, promoting the joy of literacy within our families and school community and celebrating our wonders of reading, writing, and learning together. And that concludes our instructional update for the evening. Any questions?
I have one question. On the dual enrollment AP, how many of those dual enrollment courses are taught on the high school campus by high school teachers?
So at first glance, I would have to refer back to my notes on that. I know for dual enrollment, that is one area that we have reached out to the high school. We're surveying our teachers right now to see who holds master's degrees and who holds 18 content hours in a specific subject area. We're working currently with VPCC. But I would love for Mr. Roberts to comment if you know the exact number. We do have students who...
Three?
We also have students who are able to take dual enrollment courses off-campus if they will or if they would like to. We have had one student that has done that.
Those cost money, though. When you can do it in-house, you can be like Hampton.
Sure.
You can get an associate free if you can get the staff to do that.
That's the key to growing this program. And we're certainly investing in that in our recruiting. If the teacher qualifies to be sanctioned as a college professor with a certain number of hours in that master's program, that's the key to growing this for free, like you said. There are other ways that you can do dual enrollment. We're working on those as well. They're a little more complex, putting kids on buses and taking them over to the campus. The proximity there does make it doable. It's not ideal.
In addition, we're also looking at other programs. There are some programs through TCC like cybersecurity that they're offering dual enrollment credits. And those are that online type of program. So really trying to extend out to see what other options are available, but certainly getting our instructors to be credentialed through VPCC at this time.
Is that, you know, is that a recruitment initiative? Or is that something where you're going to train them up?
Yes.
Is that a cost pocket if they want to get trained up?
It would be both. There are currently some, they're spending out there through VDOE typically per semester. It's around $7,500 to assist with each instructor if they want to get coursework to then get a dual enrollment certification. So there is funding that's out there. Right now, it's identifying. I know that we have found, I believe, one or two math teachers over at the high school who have, we're going through their transcripts now to see which courses, but they are interested in that opportunity. Absolutely. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Welcome back, Ms. Spence. We'll look forward to our financial update. I should take congratulations as well.
Thank you very much. I missed you guys last month, but I was glad I was where I was at. The first item for the financial update is the fiscal year '25 amended pay plan that is included in the consent agenda for tonight. The pay plan was updated primarily to reflect stipends that were inadvertently omitted in the original pay plan, but were paid in prior years. An example of this is the athletic director's stipend, as well as the SCARA club's sponsor's stipend. Next, I would like to take this opportunity to review the annual listing of donations received by the schools over the past year. These donations are included in the agenda items at each school board meeting upon receipt. But this will give you an opportunity to see a full list of the donations received throughout the past school year. And that list was provided at your seat this evening. As you know, schools receive donations from a variety of sources, including individuals, churches, civic organizations, local businesses, parent-teacher organizations, and also the Pecosin Education Foundation. These donations have been provided for a variety of uses, including classroom supplies and equipment, course and art supplies, Odyssey of the Mine competition, athletic teams and club support. There was also a number of teacher and staff appreciation items provided this year. This year, the schools received $55,208, which is up from the $36,000 we received last year, so it was wonderful. This chart shows a summary of all donations combined. Pecosin Education Foundation provided $14,413, or 26% of the total, which was primarily to support Odyssey of the Mine competition as well as provide grants for the teachers. The Pecosin Primary Schools PTO contributed $7,400, or 13% of the total, which was used for classroom needs. The Kiwanis Club of Pecosin contributed $5,250, or 9.5% of the total, to support Odyssey of the Mine as well as to provide for student needs. The Call family donated a Riften Adaptive Activity Chair to Pecosin City Schools valued at $5,000. As noted earlier, the total donations this year are significantly more than the prior year, and we are very appreciative of them all. We want to thank all who have provided these generous donations through this year as this helps the school in so many ways. And that concludes my report for this evening. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tillot, I think you're doing operations.
Good evening. I'm the spare tire tonight, filling in for operations. And this will be a very brief report, as Dr. Ratliff covered most of our summer projects in his last month's report. I am very excited to report that the committee, and that was representative of some administrators, teachers, parents, and also a certified playground inspector who served on our committee this year. They reviewed about nine different proposals, ranging in price. And the one they selected is the one pictured here. It also includes some adaptive material, I mean, equipment, which was a request from some of our special needs staff. So we're excited about this. Came in right around $100,000. And as you know, we earmarked $155,000 that was left from state money that we received, one-time state money. And the lion's share of that went to replace the roof and HVAC system in the primary school, which was done last summer. That allowed us to contribute $100,000 to do this new playground. And also, I'm hopeful tonight, one of the items you will consider on the agenda is to also donate the final $3,000 to the pavilion project that the primary school needed to complete that project in addition to the incredible fundraising that the PTO has conducted, you saw earlier tonight. That will then allow us to, in turn, contribute back the remainder of that money, which has to be used on certain facility projects to help offset some of the costs in CIP, with some ongoing projects. Primarily, the largest project is the HVAC renovation at the high school, which has already been approved by city council to begin next summer. Second item is the disposition or entering into surplus are modular units. As you know, we have been keeping those modular units around for several reasons. One, to find out exactly what our growth is going to look like over the next five years to see if they're necessary. Although the modular units cost a dollar, they've cost us over $350,000 over the last several years to make them usable and connected, plumbing, electricity, and all the things that go into making those viable classrooms. They have been very useful. We also, we use, since the renovation completion at the middle school, we use several of those trailers now for storage, for meetings. It's our transportation depot. We've, of course, moved the bus lot over to that site. And it's a very active place, a lot going on over there. A lot of our technology is stored there. So we plan to keep six of those trailers that are in the best shape. Something that you may not realize, we did take a tour and some board members participated to actually walk the site. Those trailers are trailers, so they have a tongue and a hitch. They can only be taken out one way. So you couldn't pluck a trailer out of the middle and sell that trailer. So there's a choreographed process to auctioning these trailers and surplusing them. So that process will be on the agenda tonight as in our surplus list. We'll ask for approval to maintain these six trailers that we will be continuing to use and surplus the remainder of those trailers. We'll also move the fence, giving more space on the playground side for kids to play. So this is a project that encompasses a lot of movement, but also is a win all the way around. That's the end of my report. Any questions?
I have a question. In regards to the trailers. So roughly, how long do you think it would take to start disposing those?
That's a good question. We start by our policy with surplus. It starts with auction. You know, our hope is always that somebody will have the same need we did a few years ago and wants them all. And of course, they'll be sold for an inexpensive price. And at cost, I'm told, if you're moving them locally, locally within, you know, a couple hundred miles, it's around $4,500 cost to move them. So all of that's going to be contingent on, if there's a buyer out there that would like to buy them all, that's our best win to do it quickly. Otherwise, we could sell them individually. The only problem is they have to go in order to be removed. So it could happen quickly, and that's typically what happens. People are in a renovation or a school has a need for multiple units. And when they hear the advertisement, they'll come and buy them all in one pot. We bought most of them from one or two vendors when we bought them years ago.
Another question. What if, you know, during the summer, we see an influx of kids, you know, at Legacy or the other houses for sale, or they purchase those? Is there a plan to pull that back and, you know, utilize those? What's the...
Another good question. If you'll recall, when we got our Weld and Cooper report, they estimated that we will gain about 350 students over the next five years. We did some research back and... some research back, and in 2010, 11, in Pecosin, we had our enrollment exceeded that number. So, we have the capacity currently to handle what the state demographers believe our enrollment will be over the next five years. So, we don't need the trailers, in other words, for our growth.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, I have one speaker.
Okay, wonderful. I'll read my statement, and then... The Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should be addressed to a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students. How one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium to follow school board policy. Time allotted speakers shall be three minutes.
The call Sheri Dykstra of 20 Amos Road.
Hello, Madam Chair, Mr. Tillot, members of the board. I am going against protocol, but I just wanted to thank Mr. Ingram. I don't know if this is his last one, or if August is going to be his last one. Three board members that are current right now were part of a very important vote that affected my children, and that was the mask, the optional for the mask during COVID, as well as something that was very important to my sophomore at the time, which was the sports. And Mr. Ingram was one of those votes in favor. I think everybody was in favor that night. But I just wanted to thank you very much for your time. Now, you can go back to your family. Thank you all for your time. I know you guys don't get paid what you should for the time you spend on all this, but thank you. Thank you very much, and I hope everybody has a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Hey, Dr. Burbidge, consent agenda?
Okay, hold on. Consent agenda tonight is approval of financial reports. Item B is authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request. Item C is approval of personnel action. Item D is approval of minutes for May's regular meeting, work session, and closed meeting. Item E is authorization for the appointment of student representative of the school board for school year 2024, 2025, A.J. Lumagui. Item F is approval of the FY25 pay plan update. Item G is approval to dispose of surplus property.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, but I'm going to help out A.J. It's Lumagi, like Mr. Miyagi. Sorry.
I like it. I like that. Mr. Miyagi. I like that. Wax on, wax off. Okay? Any discussion? Ms. Firth, would you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Patrick Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Other matters for consideration, we have consideration for the approval of appointment of the clerk of the board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I have one question that pops up, is that the items for clerk and signature and meeting dates are typically, and our policies say they happen at the July planning meeting. I kind of look back at the old agendas. Whenever there was the July meeting, it was moved to June. It was always on the agenda. Just wondered why we're going against our policy to not have it on the same day or date that we have our planning meeting. It says "July," but, I mean, it seems like we've done it in the past, but it was always in the past. It was always on that same time.
Yeah, that's when we're redoing it each year. This is an absence. As you know, April has moved to another job, so we have actually replaced this job title on this agenda, and this person needs to actually be in place, because there are roles that this person needs to be doing, beginning on, right after April's last day. This job actually starts July, and that's the only reason we're doing it now, is we won't have their meeting until after this person needs to be on the job.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of regular school board meeting dates and times for 24, 25. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. The organizational school board meeting, why is that being held in July? Don't we normally do it in June?
We've always done it in July, with the exception of last year. The chair last year suggested that we consolidate it with the June meeting and have a separate meeting afterwards. So, we did it in the June meeting last year for the first time ever that I'm aware of. It has always been, and it actually is in your board protocols, to have a special called meeting in July to reorganize.
It's now is June last year. That's why I was wondering.
It was an unusual thing last year. And I think the chair, I don't want to speak for her, but in conversations I had with her leading up to that, she had gotten information from several board members that a lot of travel in July, and it was going to be difficult to find a really good date to have the July meeting. So, seemed to be amenable to the rest of the board to have the meeting in June, is my recollection of why that was done differently than his.
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next, we have a consideration of approval of the recommended change of the homecoming date for 24, 25. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the recommended change of the homecoming date for 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next is consideration of approval of the 2024, 2025 ESA grant application. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next is the consideration of approval to utilize approximately $3,000 remaining in school construction funds to supplement the remaining amount needed for the PPS pavilion project. Is there... Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve. Utilize approximately $3,000 remaining in school construction funds to supplement the remaining amount needed for the PPS project.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just hopefully it doesn't go over budget or anything like that, right? I mean, that's a tight... Anybody's built a deck or something like that, hopefully it doesn't...
Couple boards or something, yeah.
$5,000 or something like that. I don't know, like, buffer in the plan.
You know, as you rightly stated, when you build a project, when you start a project, you think you have enough money, and things can always happen. The good news is, we do have, at the time of this project, we have a main budget that has some flexibility. So, these funds, since they are internal funds, can be used, offset some of those costs if we need it.
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next is a consideration of approval of authorized signature in the absence of the division superintendent. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next is a consideration of approval of world history textbook adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, this is strictly online, right? There's no textbook or anything like that.
That's correct. This is a... What we're finding now is most textbook companies have gotten out of the printing market. It's not cost-effective, and schools have gone from the old heavy textbooks to the online option. They are amendable at any time. Some new information comes out, they can offer a new package. So, this is a totally online textbook.
And how... So, we discussed before, you know, the accumulative time that students are on their laptops. How much will this increase by?
It's what's happening now. I mean, most of their research and access to information comes from online. Very little print material is available anymore, just kind of the world we live in. So, schools actually have difficulty finding printed materials. So, it's mostly online. Now, current best practices don't rely heavily on a lot of printed material. There's a lot of research that happens without print. So, that's also following the trend of current best practice.
This is also a high school. This is also a high school textbook.
Yeah, ninth grade.
So, it's not, you know, the little...
I know a lot of the electric textbooks, they have a lot more supplemental material. Like, I teach a course, and they have simulations, all sorts of stuff that they can do beyond just reading printed text.
Pretty amazing.
It's good stuff.
Yeah. Thank you, though. That was a great question.
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of approval of the precalculus textbook adoption. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion?
So, this is a book, right?
The one area that we find a bit of an exception is in mathematics. They're still printing math textbooks. Typically, they're used by the teachers as particular assignments for practice. The instruction is still in class, a lot of hands-on, and even a growing amount of project-based learning. But there's still a lot of practice that has to happen in learning mathematics, and we still use textbooks.
It's the...
And it does also have an online component, so it's available both ways.
Is it for AP calculus or for both?
This is just precal... precal textbook.
I think it said AP.
That's right. It's AP precalculus. That's right. That's right.
Okay, so, good. All right. Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Next is the consideration of approval of the literacy plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions or discussion about the literacy plan?
My question really is, like, with the temporary movements, like, with All In, this is flexible enough to move in and out of having to, you know, have structure or have resources and not, you know, the resources go away after a year or whatever it is.
Absolutely. It's designed, and there was a lot of training that went into this, provided by the VDOE, to make sure that every school division in the state was meeting the Act, the Virginia Literacy Act. And it creates a lot of flexibility for school divisions in how they're going to meet those requirements, but the requirements are very specific about how kids will learn, and it's all about science-based reading. It's a shift from some school divisions in using several different models for the instruction of reading and writing. And this is, requires school divisions to use the science of reading to instruct. But the flexibility exists in curriculum that you buy to use. There's a lot of autonomy, and a matter of fact, our team this summer will be working to build lesson plans internally from our own experts, using this framework to be the guardrail, so to speak. But it does create autonomy and flexibility for school divisions in what resources they use, as long as it meets the fundamental requirements of the Act, which is the best practice from research, to use science-based reading. Did that answer your question?
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract for non-medical temporary staffing services with Allied Instructional Services, LLC. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can you elaborate on this?
What do we hire?
The non-medical is things like PT, physical therapy, vision. We have a lot of need for contract services that we don't have the staff to perform some of those in-house. So, we have always used contract, and this is a company we've been using for several years, but requires an annual contract.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Mr. DeBose.
Aye.
Dr. Goodell.
Aye.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is six-zero.
And lastly, a consideration of approval of moving the first reading of changes to policy manual to the second reading. Back at here. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes. There's a date that's incorrect. It's Monday, June 17.
Oh, okay.
We'll make that right. I just noticed that.
I have concern. There's no way I was able to read through all that again on Monday afternoon. So, I don't know what's on it. There's no way I can vote, just so you know, because I have not been able to even look at it.
This is simply our policy. Unless you vote to approve a policy on first read, which you can do, our policy requires that when we edit a policy or adopt a policy, it requires two readings. We received this from our attorneys yesterday afternoon. The same thing, if you'll recall, happened last year, and in this very same meeting last year, we approved to pass on from first reading to second reading. That'll give you a full month to... to pass on from first reading to second reading. That'll give you a full month to study these policies. You don't really have a choice because these are required by the General Assembly. These are not in-house policies. They are policies that respond to General Assembly action. So when the General Assembly says, "School boards must have a policy that does X," then our attorneys correct our policies or build new. These are all actually current policies we have that require an amendment based on General Assembly action. General Assembly affected many policies in schools, but our attorneys have identified 14 policies you have enclosed here that need adjustment to comply with the new law from...with new laws from the General Assembly. So as much as it's exciting reading, you...if you vote against the policy, you're voting against the law. These are in compliance, all of them with General Assembly action that just concluded a month ago and our attorneys provided for...but I have only read through the first two policies myself. That was what I enjoyed last night. So I'll be doing the same thing over the next few days and weeks. And if there's questions I have, I'll certainly, of course, reach out to our attorneys and try to be available when we have this for action of approval at the next meeting. We have some discussion that we'll have to have whether we want to add this on the reorganization meeting, which we typically don't do. But there is, in fact, two laws that go into effect August the 1st. And so we will not have a regular scheduled meeting other than the reorganization meeting until after August 1st. Although that same thing happened to us last year with a couple of laws. It's not...there's no significant issue with approving it as long as school hasn't started prior to policy being enacted.
What are the two laws?
From what?
There's two laws that I...
Last year.
Maybe a question for the attorney or whatever. Going through a lot of the language they're still using, "shall," and I don't know if that's enough of a term because sometimes it's misinterpreted. It's not strong enough. It's a...they're must or may. I don't know. His...I'm not a lawyer. So if he's like, "I can defend that all day," then fine.
I've asked that same question, Dr. Goodell, of lawyers over the years. There is a significant legal meaning to must, shall, should. And so when they use those words, because boards have a tendency to like to edit those words, and their advice is always, "We use words for a legal reason. Don't touch them." So that's the advice we've always got.
You know, the Supreme Court took them all out or something like that.
Yeah. And there...those are where the...I've also been told over the years that folks would be generally surprised at how many lawsuits are filed and fought costing lots of money over terms like shall and will and must or should. This is an example of that. So I do, and I know you all do well, we've been working with Sands Anderson for many years and I have a high level of trust for their work because this is the only kind of law they practice, is education law. And it puts them in the expert seat. So I feel confident that we're in good hands. But I often do call and ask a question like, "What does this actually mean? Can you help me understand this?" And they do many times legalese and I always understand it.
So I have a comment. We have three school board positions coming up that are going to be available. Should we make a motion to table until the July for the first reading?
We...I don't recommend that. That's why I put it on this agenda. These, again, if this was a...these were policies that were in-house that we were going to debate to accomplish some task, I would certainly recommend that. But these are policies, and as you read them, you'll realize that as well, that we don't really have any autonomy in not approving these. We could debate what it means and how we might administer some of these policies, the work that we will do to enforce them. And, you know, our staff hasn't had a chance to even look at this. So the enforcement of policy often is where the work comes in. But school boards really don't have an option to not approve...you can, but it's not wise to not approve a policy that is in response to a General Assembly action. I hope that answers. So we...and again, we did this exact same thing last year with 11 policies, as I recall. And we read it for first reading, voted unanimously to push it off to second reading. We had second reading in our...at our August meeting and all 11 policies were approved unanimously for that reason.
Prior to the start of...
Prior to the start of school.
And so I just want to highlight something for citizen participation. It looks like we added in the ability for students to be able to come and speak at the podium.
And you know, it's interesting. That is something we have always allowed in Pecosin. We don't have a policy that precludes that. But the General Assembly wanted to make sure that no school division could have a policy that did not allow students a voice in their government. And I, again, applaud that.
Ms. Firth, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is six zero.
Now we have communications and other matters by the school board and our superintendent. And we'll start with you, Mr. Ingram.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Thatcher for all the work that he accomplished being the student representative and thank him for all the information that he shared with us. I want to welcome Mr. Lumagi. Welcome to the school board. I know you'll do a great job. Want to thank all the people for the donations that they gave the school division. Want to congratulate all of the different athletic programs and the Odyssey of the Mind programs for their competitiveness and success in each of their areas. Want to congratulate the Islander awardees and want to congratulate the...for the state nomination for RISE for Ms. Tolliver Robinson. And that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
So echo those recognitions. Want to congratulate the track, state champs and baseball state champs. Got to see the mind. And wanted to thank Ms. Overby for all the hard work on the Pavilion. Also kind of hidden in that work, a friend of mine, Jack Bloom, he was the engineer that stacked the plans. There was kind of a real...talking to the construction folks where it was such a small project that we wanted to do it, where it was going to be months in advance. And I can take it, he took his time to kind of review them, like review the plans and get those going so we could get that instead of letting it sit around. So I just want to shout out to you.
Thank you. And thank you, Jack. Mr. Childress?
I'd like to congratulate all the award winners, teachers and students. It's a lot, so I'm not going to go through all of them. I want to congratulate all the teachers. They made it through a year and all the other employees. They did a great job. My kids are very excited to get through the year and looking forward to next year. So thank you to all the employees that helped push them through that.
Thank you. Mr. DeBose?
Want to echo everybody else's comments. Special recognition to Ms. Overby for everything she's done for the Pavilion and the fact that it's being dedicated to Nurse Riggins. He held a special place in a lot of people's hearts, including mine and my sons. So thank you for all that work that you've done. I also want to thank Mr. Ingram for his service on the board. Yeah, it's been good to have him on the board and it's been good to have somebody to bounce ideas off of in a public setting. So it's been good to have him here. And also want to thank all of our teachers and professionals that may be leaving us this year. We've had a number of them, a number of them for all valid reasons, but we want to thank them for being part of Pecosin. And I think everybody knows how special our little town is. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burbage?
I just want to echo what everyone else has said about, I mean, the list is long. You know, the Odyssey of the Mind group and all the hard work that the coaches and, you know, students put in making their way to the national or international competition. The Islander Award winners. Ms. Nikki, she was always a smiling face that I saw at the elementary...or sorry, the primary school when I was dropping my son off in the mornings. I wish her...I wished her the best of luck as the RISE nominee. Baseball and track, I have to say that, you know, I was following that online. You know, I was really appreciate to see the posts. And then Ms. Overby, I want to thank you for all your hard work on the Pavilion. Nurse Riggins helped my son out a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members with the many congratulations for our teams, including Odyssey of the Mind, which my daughter was on. I'll just say you haven't lived until you've been in a tornado shelter for an hour in Iowa with 700 kids. But we had a great time and congratulations to the team. I want to say also thank you to Mr. Ingram. Always appreciate the openness and transparency in the conversation and really appreciate your service and steadfastness. It will be missed. Thank you for that. Ms. Overby, I would also like to personally say thank you. I don't know if you know, but I'm also a nurse and in part because of Barbara Riggins. So it means a lot to me and I'm very thankful for that, for you taking that on and making that happen. I also would like to say a special shout out to Ms. Morrison and Ms. Bennett for her beautiful graduation. I don't know if you all were there, but it was super fantastic. And you don't really know what it's like to give your child their diploma until you do it, but it was a pretty awesome experience to get to do that. So thank you to them for that. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Ms. Brown. Your service was stellar. We are better because of you and we will miss you. Thank you. Mr. Tillot?
Well, I echo all of that. And I do want to take this time to, of course, thank Ms. Overby for her steadfast work on this. There's always times in a project when it can slump and often up. And she didn't let that happen. So we appreciate your consistency in making this happen. We can't wait to see the Pavilion. Also, I know everybody said it, but for a small community to have this kind of representation around the world and in Salem with the state competitions athletically, it just doesn't happen. That's a lot of hard work and dedication and an example of a very healthy community. So I congratulate all of the incredible award winners tonight that were celebrated tonight. And lastly, I do want to say I'm going to professionally and personally miss my two sidekicks. Dr. Ratliff, as you know, accepted a position as superintendent of schools in North Carolina. And he did great work there. But he's done great work here in Pecosin. We're going to miss him. And also Amber Brown, who is going to go work in Norfolk, take care of kids and families there, a few minutes from her house. But we're going to really miss these two incredible educators that have worked tirelessly for the kids and families in Pecosin. So a huge thank you to 305 employees who collectively and individually make Pecosin who it...a place it is for people to live and grow and prosper. And I'm just incredibly thankful and humbled to be a part of that team. So hats off. Good work.
Is there any other material for board review, Ms. Firth?
No, ma'am.
Then we will be adjourned. Thank you.